Board members will be live in almost, let's say, 30 seconds.
Okay.
Can you beat 17 minutes?
I can't beat 17, but you know what? Give two. Give me two hours.
Okay, Ms. Hatter, we are live right now.
Good evening, fellow board members. Good evening, LRSD staff. Good evening, Little Rock and beyond. Thank you so much for taking time out to join us this evening. We will, today, July 8th, you are witnessing a special meeting that will later go into our agenda meeting. So with that, we will start our special meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will ask Director Mason if he will lead us.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director Mason, for that. I'm gonna skip the, well, I did the greetings and the welcoming, and I'm gonna skip my normal and get right into our, taking a moment of silence. We've learned that we've lost a employee. Her name is Ms. Kim Megan, M-A-G-N-I-N. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. And she have been with our district for a few years now, and she, she started running the career later in life, giving our students everything she had from past experiences in teaching. And with that, I will take, will ask for us all just to take a moment of silence.
Thank you, you all. And I'm gonna pause for a minute and look to my superintendent, look to our superintendent, see if he have any things to share. I know he may, but...
Yeah, I just want to add, you know, to the loss we all feel, and especially condolences to her family and to her school family. The Terry Elementary family, as many of you probably are aware, over the last four years has dealt with a lot of different things that are very tragic in nature that deal with the loss of life. So we appreciate Stephanie Franklin and her leadership at that school to try to help her community and how the staff always bonds together to work through these kind of things. But this educator, really only with us for two years, but she certainly had an impact. And she, like Little Rock, sometimes we think it's a big community, but it's a small community. I know Mr. Adams reached out and said that this was a colleague, someone that he interacted with. And Mr. Mason, this was a person that went, he went to school with. So, you know, we all have things that, you know, we kind of connect with, but we can all connect when we lose somebody that's in our education profession. I want to share that the family was, I think, very brave and bold in their message today on TV to share that this was COVID-related and that, you know, it's always almost impossible to know exactly where it may have generated from. It might have came in from the school environment, just to be honest, which we're dealing with that topic later tonight. It also, they shared that their mom had not got a vaccine. And so, you know, that in itself, I think, hopefully will help a lot of other people to understand that vaccines are really critical for all of us, staff, for parents, anyone that's eligible. And so obviously, that's again a part of our conversation this evening. But I appreciate Ms. Hatter for recognizing this educator. And as we learn more about what the family will do to, with funeral arrangements, we will for sure let you know. So thank you, Ms. Hatter.
Thank you. Okay, we will move into our public comment for our special meeting. And do we have any public comments?
Yes, ma'am. And board members, tonight, we have three people that have signed up for the in-person delivering through virtual medium tonight. Do want to point out also to our community that we have two of our board members accessing the meeting through a virtual means, and that's Ms. Nolan and Ms. Mourning. So we appreciate both of them making arrangements to still attend and be a part of our environment tonight for both the special meeting and then also for our agenda meeting. The first person, and what will happen is these folks are in a waiting room right now. Ms. Smith will be allowing them in. When we were getting ready to start the meeting, I'm not sure this individual had logged on yet, but I want to check. And with her, first, Ms. Smith, do we have Ms. McLean on to speak tonight? Ms. Smith, can you respond to us? Did, we have Ms. McLean?
Ms. McLean has not logged in. I'm sorry. We have Ms. Jelly and Ms. Dear.
Okay, then our next person will be Ms. Dear. As board members, I know that Ms. Wilson keeps track of this, for each speaker having the right to speak for three minutes. And Ms. Dear, if you'll introduce yourself, and then we can proceed. Ms. Dear, can you hear us?
Okay, we'll give a couple more seconds, and then we'll move to the next comment.
I think I see her.
Is she wearing the white collar? Oh, there she, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry for that. Hello, and good evening. I am a parent of a child in the Little Rock School District and a member of the Central Arkansas DSA, a former co-chair. I am here tonight to speak about several topics, and one is the safety of my child inside the schools this coming fall. So I am hoping that there is some type of mask mandate or something placed in the schools to make sure that it is a safer environment for my son, as he is too young to be vaccinated from COVID. I do understand what legislation has done this past session as far as mask mandates, but hopefully the school board and the district can figure out something, because I do not plan to send my son back into the school building if it's not safe. He stayed home from March of 2020 to March of 2021. Last year, he is a single child. He spent a lot of time at home with his parents last year because the state refused to shut down and do what it needed to do for COVID. So I'm real disappointed in that, and hopefully we can make some changes as cases rise to over 1,000 today. In regards to the urgent raise request for Mr. Bailey, as I understand it, he was threatening to leave the district or get his pay raised. I can understand that everyone needs to fight for their wages, when my son's art teacher was fearful of contracting COVID in a very unsure environment, and she threatened to leave the district. I don't remember special meetings to make her job safer, and there certainly weren't any immediate raises given. She left. His art teacher is the reason that we returned to LRSD, because she showed me that, you know, she had faith in the district's abilities to move forward. Now, we not only have lost several qualified and experienced educators, we also have an expiration date on the COVID leave for staff because of another harsh decision. So I am recognizing a theme with how business is conducted at board meetings, and I really hope that that can change, because we can slow down votes, and we can slow down and read documents, and we can slow down requests for raises. I'm not blaming Mr. Bailey for that. But we've had several teachers leave. Obviously, we've lost some teachers for other reasons. And I'm just real disappointed in some of the decisions lately, and I am very concerned. It's a parallel process. If the teachers are doing okay, and they're happy, and they're safe, then that means our children are. It's, they correlate with each other. So as I advocate for my son, I'm advocating for the teachers. It's the same. So thank you for letting me speak tonight, and I hope you have a good rest.
Thank you, Ms. Dear. We appreciate your comments. And hopefully, some of the discussion that we have this evening will cover some of the topics you just shared. Next, we have Ms. Katrina Jelly. Ms. Jelly, are you available? I know that Ms. Smith is gonna be letting her in. I know we did have her in a waiting room.
Mr. Poor, while we're waiting, Veronica McLean said she did not receive the link, and she does want to make her public comment. She just isn't able to get on because she hasn't gotten a link. And so I hope we can send that to her very quickly so she can participate.
Ms. Smith, did you capture that? And could you please forward the link to Ms. McLean, and we'll come back to her, and it could even be after I announce the oral comments that I have, the written comments. Ms. Jelly, you're up, and the board recognized you right now. We can't hear you right now, Ms. Jelly.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is the time beginning?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I would like to thank the board for hearing public comments and responding rapid to issues that I had found yesterday. I'm not here to be a thorn in the side for the board, but rather to voice the opinion of myself and other parents in the LRSD community. The Ready for Learning Plan for 2021-2022 has passed the point of public comment, and in May 21st, 2021, Act 1002 was passed shortly before this, and it states that it is illegal for schools to enforce mask mandates. The law does not specify any penalization, which would happen to schools if they were to choose their own mandates. Therefore, any penalization would be illegal. They cannot withhold funds, find anybody, or put anybody in jail. With that in mind, the rise in the Delta variant and the significant increase in cases and hospitalizations, 1,000 yesterday and 1,200 today, increases the likelihood of children being more significantly impacted by this because they can't get vaccinations. The schools need to stand up for their communities. This law was passed at a time when cases were going down significantly based off of previous meetings. It appears that the board is about to remove the abilities for schools to have the mandates despite clear changes in the span of a few months since the legislation has passed. As the economy has picked up, more parents are back to work, and federal programs that supported parents and enabled those pivoting from in-person to virtual to be able to take time off without losing their jobs has ended. I'm asking the board not to make changes to the mask mandates currently that are on the Ready for Learning Plan. My personal experience last year was that shortly after I placed my daughter back to face-to-face, a student in her class tested positive. The kids all pivoted to online, but none of the other students in her class tested positive. Plain and simple, the masks work. If LRSD has the opportunity to keep more kids in school and not put further burdens on issues such as parents not losing their jobs, kids being left alone, or meals not getting to hungry children, then keep the Ready for Learning to Plan as it is. We have a full year of school data that backs up the fact that masks work. A change in these policies would put a strain on everybody and resources across the community. Keeping children masked and only sending home the positive cases works. I do believe our best line of defense is vaccination, and parents and teachers should absolutely go forward with this. The truth is, a far cry from this in Little Rock sadly. We must protect the community by offering a safe and stable environment where kids, parents, and teachers alike do not have to worry so much about everybody around them until all children and all schools have the ability to be offered...
Thank you, Ms. Jelly. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jelly. The, I'm gonna, I don't know if Ms. McLean has logged on yet. I'm gonna save her for last. I'm gonna go ahead and do the comments that we received in writing right now. The first one is from Ms. Harris, who asked me to speak to her comment. It says, "Students should be mandated to wear a mask in schools. Schools have to consider the students who may have health issues and even teachers." The reality is, students and teachers can still catch COVID after getting the vaccine. Please do the right thing. The next comment came from Geraldine Coleman, and hers also dealt with masks. "Students should be mandated to wear a mask. Also, I feel the four-day work week helped teachers plan more meaningful and great. I feel it can also work this school year as well. Help the teachers that are risking their lives for students and ungrateful administration and society." The next individual is Ms. Jennifer Eddy. Again, this is on masks. She says, "Masks need to be worn in schools by students and staff. I'm an elementary teacher in LRSD and have two children in LRSD elementary schools. We all wore masks last year, and we all did fine. Was it uncomfortable? Yes. Did we all get used to it? Yes. The rising cases this summer are alarming, and even with vaccines, people are still contracting the virus. I truly believe that masks and other restrictions we had in the school helped keep the cases from getting out of control this past school year. My children and the children I teach are not old enough to get the vaccine, and it's my duty as a mother and a teacher to keep children safe." The next individual is Ms. Mary Thomas. Ms. Thomas writes, "I want all students to wear masks in school next year. All teachers should be required to get vaccinated. I have two grandsons in the Little Rock School District, and I fear for their safety if masks are not worn until cases are down, as they were when we, the school ended in May." Thank you. Still a couple more. Next is Ms. Jamisha Braxton, and her comment deals with the Ready for Learning Plan for this coming school year. "Please consider keeping the mask mandate for the upcoming school year. My son is in elementary and is not old enough for a vaccine. In order to keep him and others safe, it is imperative that students wear masks," that's emphasized in all caps, "at all times. Thank you in advance for thinking of the students in the community that you are elected to serve by doing what will keep kiddos and the school personnel safe, which is wearing a mask." The next individual is Ms. Becky Olson. Again, this is about masks. "Studies like the one I have posted below have found mask-wearing is harmful to children. Please read this article, and we urge you to allow our children to attend school without a mask like normal in August." And of course, this link will be provided as we share the public comments back out to you and to our community. Next individual is Ms. Latice Miller. "What actions are being taken to ensure students, ensure kids' safety from COVID? Anti-maskers, for those too young to get to the vaccine, and/or unvaccinated children, teachers should be separated from those that will wear their mask or are fully vaccinated. Catering to those that have no regard for public safety needs to end. Little Rock School District needs to recommend that each child is vaccinated, wear a mask, or that they should do virtual. Furthermore, why are board meetings and other offices of LRSD still not open to the public, yet the safety of teachers and children is of no concern?" I've got two more, I believe. Make that three. Next is from Melanie Kramer. "Please, please, please bring masks back this school year for our children under 12 who cannot be vaccinated. We need to do everything we can to protect their health and the health of teachers and staff." Next is Angela Hunter. Again, masks and vaccines. "I understand that Little Rock School District cannot legally require masks in the school this upcoming year, but I'm imploring the board to do everything you can to find legal workarounds to this in order to protect our children and our school staff. My children are too young to be vaccinated, and I do not want them spending hours and hours in an old building with unmasked students and staff. Can LRSD do more to incentivize vaccination in all eligible populations starting now?" Excuse me. I think I will turn it over to you here if I can't get through this. "Are there other solutions? Please hold a town hall about this issue with the board, LRSD staff, and medical staff from UAMS, so that the public can discuss these issues and share suggestions. We need creative solutions, because our legislature and governor have let us down and put us all at risk, especially given that the vaccines are also being sickened by the new variants. If at a much lower rates, with less to our consequences." Thank you for your time. The last individual is Alexis Sangera. "Please consider allowing more flexibility in the current required year-long commitment to the virtual learning program. My student deserves to attend school in person when it is safe to do so." Ms. Smith, do we have Ms. McLean on yet? It looks like I see her.
I don't mean to interrupt, but what was that last comment? One more time. It was kind of short. Could you reread that? I missed the beginning of it.
This was from Alexis Sangera, and it said, "Please consider allowing more flexibility in the current required year-long commitment to the virtual learning program. My student deserves to attend school in person when it is safe to do so." Do we have Ms. McLean on? Ms. McLean, can you speak?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, thank you. You can start whenever it works for you.
Okay, it kept saying reconnecting, so I didn't know if it was working or not. I just want to thank y'all for giving me the time to speak, and I want to say I know that y'all are all in a very difficult situation right now. The thoughtfulness and hard work that y'all are putting in trying to come up with a good plan that keeps everybody happy, healthy, and safe. I appreciate that. A couple of things. I do wish, I've got topics kind of all over the map, and I'm gonna try to go fast. I do wish that y'all would allow public comments, commenting on the YouTube videos or the Facebook videos. I felt like that really helped people kind of engage a little bit more, and I would like to see that return unless we're gonna start having meetings where the public can come in, which I wouldn't recommend at this point because, yikes. Also, I think that we're gonna have to do a lot as a community and as a board to really pump up the teachers and staff for this upcoming year, because it's gonna be really hard. And the blow to a lot of them with the massive raise Mr. Bailey got, you know, whatever your reasoning was for the decision, that's fine, but we need to show the teachers and the staff a lot of love. And when we are told that we can't afford to provide, you know, enough staff for certain schools, but we can do this, it kind of really hurt the morale. Finally, my child is entering third grade, and I'm asking and begging for y'all to provide a safe environment for him. He's done virtual since March of 2020. He can't do that again because his mental health can't handle it. But I also can't put my child's physical health at risk, knowing that he's sitting next to an unmasked child or being taught by a teacher that's unvaccinated. I don't want to separate people, but everybody has their choice, but you're not free from the consequences of your choices. And my child deserves face-to-face learning just as much as a child who comes from a family that refuses to mask or vaccinate. So I don't know if that needs to be done at the school level or at the district level, but I would really like to see a plan where my child is kept away from children that are not masking or that are coming from unvaccinated households. He's not old enough to be vaccinated. Both his father and I are vaccinated, and we still mask in public. But my child has to go back to face-to-face learning, and we have to offer a safe, equitable environment for him as well, and virtual is not it. I'd also ask that until the Ready for Learning Plan is completely done, that we're not asked to make a decision, and that you allow a lot more flexibility, because I cannot commit to a year. I don't even want to commit to a semester, because I would hope that people here are gonna start doing the right things and getting this center of control for the safety of our children. But I thank you for your time and commitment to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. All right, and that concludes our public comment, and we will move forth with our agenda, which is the personnel recommendations. And with that, we're gonna hear from Superintendent Poor on those personnel recommendations.
Board members, we appreciate the opportunity to use this special meeting for personnel changes. It does allow us to keep the flow of employees moving from one campus to another or even from an employee that we are bringing in from another district. In fact, we have one recommendation tonight from Mann's Assistant Principal that's coming from Pulaski County Schools. So it helps us, helps them, then try to fill the spot behind it. So thank you for consideration. I will ask that, board members, if we get into motions and discussion on this item, I see Ms. Nolan up visually. Ms. Mourning, you will also have to make yourself visible as we go into any kind of action on this item as we progress with the discussion. Thank you.
So have everyone, I'll pause. Have everyone had an opportunity to review your packet for the special meeting? Okay. And we're ready to move forward on that recommendation? Okay.
Oh. Can I ask, now, we're just, is this one person, or is it a list of people? Because I only see, I only see one person.
It is. This is the special meeting, and so it is only on the information that, like, you received for the special meeting.
And Ms. Callaway, I have a hard copy here that you can see, but it does include more than just the Assistant Principal. It does include other hires and resignations, and I'll just give you my copy if you'd like.
Okay, that was not on the...
It was sent to you as a board packet yesterday.
Board packet, okay. I just got three things.
That document was sent yesterday to all board members.
Let me look again.
Is there any thoughts and comments on the packet? I know Director Callaway is reviewing at the moment.
Madam Chair, if there's no discussion about it, then I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. I move that the Little Rock School Board approve the personnel changes noted in the board packet.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Director Nolan and Director Mourning, I can't...
Ms. Nolan has got a hand waving.
Okay, okay. Got it. Okay, any oppose? Any opposed? All right, well, that motion passes.
I think what we ought to do is, I would recommend, board, that we take that as an 8-0, because I don't think we can count Ms. Mourning's, because I never saw her live on the screen.
There she is.
Oh, there she is. Yeah, she's waving. Okay, now we see her. Thank you, Ms. Mourning. We'll go nine.
Okay. Now we can make a motion to adjourn our special meeting and move into our agenda meeting. So I'm making that motion.
Second motion.
There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Good. All right. So we have officially ended our special meeting, and we will move into our agenda meeting. This should go by at a nice pace. So again, you guys, welcome to our second meeting of the month, which is known as our agenda meeting. We will hear from the district on a few presentations, and of course, then we'll go over our proposed agenda, and then we will move forward with adjournment. So again, we welcome you all to our meeting, and we will go into the update on agenda setting committees.
That was just for you, Ms. Hatter.
Oh, I'm sorry. That...
That's right. You're right on target. You're just gonna give the board a quick update about the agenda-setting committee that you were gonna establish so that we can change, look at changing our policy.
Oh, yes. So on that, we talked about, thank you, long day, talked about our agenda... Oh, yes, so on that, we talked about, thank you, long day, talked about our agenda, and so I'm coming back to you, letting you guys know that we are establishing that. Director Nolan has agreed to be on it, appointed Ms. Leanne Wilson to be on that as well, to talk about how we set our agenda. And so Director Mason so kindly asked for us to just move forward and then appoint people to that, and so that's what we did, and we'll have that. And that's...
Just one comment, I know, like, Mr. Wood, you provided me some comments, and I've already shared that with Ms. Hatter as well, so that the committee can see what your suggestions were.
And so that's the update on that committee, and then moving forward...
Excuse me.
I have a, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Callaway.
I would like to be on that committee.
Okay, well...
I mean, you appointed them, I understand that, but I would like to be on that committee. Because I'm the one who raised the question.
Okay, because, okay, so with that, Director Nolan?
Well, I just have a question, and maybe Mr. Walker could help. For us to meet and work through this as a committee, knowing that there are legal restrictions on, you know, when two board members meet and get together and talk, I just want to make sure that we're complying with all of that, and hopefully the district can help us set the committee meeting up in a way that still complies with public meeting laws and all the things we have to do.
I can start.
Go ahead. Yes, so it will take place right as we get together to figure out the date that we'll meet to do this. It will take place in the boardroom, and because it's two or more, legally, it will have to be live, so that, so yes, Director Nolan, we will be in compliance. Okay, all righty, moving forth with the agenda, if there's not any more comments. Ready-to-Learn Update, and Superintendent Poor, I'm going to, go ahead and let you get into that.
Thank you, I just want to give two things before I turn this over to Dr. McGee. This is Dr. McGee's first official meeting where he's helping deliver, so high, high expectations I have for him right now, I'm just kidding you, but we're, he is, will take on the responsibilities of helping lead that Ready for Learn team, along with Dr. Mark Roberts. Many of you remember that we appointed him into that position this spring to help us with ESSR funding. I think there's been two things in particular that I want to just jump in ahead of Dr. McGee, and I'm not trying to pull from his presentation, he's going to bring them up later too, but I've heard over and over and over that, what are we going to do about COVID leave? And Dr. McGee and I had a conversation with some of the medical teams that are in our community right now, of what the hospitals are thinking about medical leave. It's a hot topic for them, as I'm sure Mr. Adams and...
Everybody.
It's a hot topic probably for everybody, huh, that of how we're going to handle leave and how we handle COVID leave. So what we could pledge to you is, we're going to work with our employee groups on this, and we came up with a good solution at the end of the first semester to lead us into the second semester. I have high belief that we can do the same. So employees and parents, we know we got to come up with a good COVID leave solution. The second thing that I want to bring up under the Ready for Learning Update is that we know that there is a lot of concern about the digital school and how that can be a proactive solution for some parents. And I just want to, we've been messaging this now for almost a week. This is another opportunity that we are going to allow parents to sign up for that digital school all the way till the very first day of school. Second thing is, we've also amended the way we're going to go about it to allow parent to opt out at semester. Remember before, we talked about for a year commitment, but this COVID situation has changed the dynamics. We've got to move a little bit differently. We've got to be flexible. And so, you know, before, we were all hung up on it because it really was a staffing thing. But with these ESSR funds, that does give us a little more chance to be flexible, and I want our public to know that they can sign up for the digital school all the way to the first day of school. It may mean that we have some changes to make, you know, of modifying staffing, but we'll get that done. And we also allow parents to opt back into a traditional school setting at the end of the first semester if they do choose that virtual for the first semester with our Ignite program. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McGee to share his PowerPoint, and we're looking forward to the discussion with all of you.
Thank you, Superintendent Poor, Madam President, members of the board, and to our Little Rock School District community, again, Superintendent Poor and those who are watching. Let me first begin to say that I want the community and this board to know that we are committed as a district that we take the safety of our students and our staff as our top priority. Our Point of Contact Committee has already met, and will continue to meet to explore ways that we can continue to enhance, ensure the safety of both our students and our staff. So with that, I'm going to jump right into our update. You see the purposes here, just the main purpose that I want to just outline, again, this is just an update. We're just beginning to have these conversations, and we're going to try our best to finalize these conversations. But we also want to be transparent with our funding and give you a brief overview of where we are in terms of our funding, and then again, just provide the next steps. So with that, some of the key discussions that we are having, that we will continue to have, again, COVID leave, as our superintendent just told you, again, some of the face covering that has been a hot topic. We're looking at whether or not we're going to impose travel, so those are just some key things there, you can see. Again, some other key discussion that we got to, again, keeping in mind the safety of our students and staff, our general disinfection and cleaning protocols. So keeping in mind also our social and emotional learning and the well-being of both our students and staff. And if, if possible, we're going to continue to try to do our best to social and physical distance. So with that, also with that in mind, please be mindful, some of the recommendations that our new nurse for the district supervisor, Jacqueline McMune, has already discussed with the POC committee, you can see here. Again, there's been mentioned already Act 1002, which will go into effect August 1. It does, at this time, prevent us to, from mandating masks. And with that, our legal team, Attorney Walker, and I will continue to explore whether there are ways around that. Again, we want to do our best to continue to make sure that we keep the safety of our students and staff. And you see the other guidelines here, that are some of the recommendations. So with that, I'm going to jump right into just a small overview of our funding of ESSR. I want to give you ESSR 1, the Expenditure Report. You see this right here, it's breaking down, broken down in many different categories here. We were awarded six points, seven million roughly over that, and we have already spent all of that money, ESSR 1. ESSR 2, you see, this is where we took the learning loss program, or the summer program, summer learning programs that we just completed several days ago, technology updates, and some other supplies and things of that nature there. And that's roughly, again, at the bottom, a little bit over 26 million. So the funding source that I provided to the board, and I want to update our community, our community as we continue to be transparent here, again, the original allocation for ESSR 1, roughly over 6.7. ESSR 2, a little bit over 28 million. Now, please be mindful with ESSR 2, that there are still expenditures coming in, so that balance that I just showed you previously actually is probably a little bit more. So the remaining balance as we speak, as the other day, was roughly a little bit over 2.4 million. That is probably less than that. And then, we have not begun to spend the ARP, ESSR. There are some new guidelines that's going to be coming out for that spending. We want to make sure that we stay within compliance of DESI, which is the Division of Elementary and Secondary Education. Now, our next steps here, again, this is just to provide the board and our community just an update, a little bit overview of our expenditure report, and our next steps. We got some things we want to go ahead, our Ready for Learning Committee will begin meeting tentatively, we're scheduled to meet Tuesday from 4 to 5. We do anticipate, after collaborating with DESI, the guidance that's going to be coming out from the department. And again, we would like to, and also, board members, let me also add, this was tweaked just a little bit from the one that we previously sent you, because we do want to poll our Little Rock School District community to get our community input, and then we want to continue to meet again with our Ready for Learning team, but also, we're going to want to take it to our PPC committee. Then we, hopefully, we will try to have a draft for the board in our community by the 22nd of this month. And then we'll be looking forward to uploading the revised Ready for Learning Plan. With that, board members, I will take any questions.
Okay, I will open it up with a question, and then I know this was a quick overview, appreciate that. Question is, right as our COVID numbers, and this is a conversation we've been having, and it echoes some of what we have already heard earlier, but with the COVID numbers rising, in the plan, in the Ready to Learn Plan, will it address right when school, buildings, or grade levels will have to be fluid and pivot to virtual learning because of possible cases with, within the, our exposure within the building? We know it's an airborne virus, and we know that there's only so much that one can do, but is, will the plan also have a plan for if that happens for our school building?
Yes, so we will continue with the Point of Contact Committee. Again, I'm sure when the guidance are released from DESI, that we will have the option to be able to be ready to pivot to virtual learning if we have to. The Point of Contact Committee, we did discuss that just recently, a couple of days when we met, so we stand by to continue to review the numbers every day, and we're going to be ready to pivot if we have to pivot when we begin August the 16th.
And DESI, or ADE, for those who don't know what that is, they are going to come out with some level of guidelines sometime soon, maybe?
Yes, when I spoke with Ms. Stacy Smith, who's the Deputy Commissioner for DESI or ADE, she just anticipated having those guidelines within this month of July.
Thank you.
And I think it's going to be coming out within the next week, or two, if I'm not mistaken, is that right?
I believe so. I do want to add to this answer, though, I think it's a really great question. One of the things that we did really well, okay, so when this whole thing started, you know, a year and a half ago, our learning platform was not, not great. The new learning platform that we used, starting in the fall of last year and throughout all the school year, Schoology, is really optimal because it allows us to use that platform in an in-person setting as well as in a virtual setting. So if we have to pivot, we've got the tools. We've also used the ESSR funds to make sure that all students have devices, all students have Wi-Fi access. So we're set up, if we have to pivot, to allow our students to go, let's say, if we had to go do a five-day, do a 10-day thing like we did last year in some of our schools to pivot to virtual, we can still do that. And you all know that we were pretty aggressive as a district compared to others of making that switch, which I think one of the parents even said that that actually helped in her scenario, that we did that and not one other child in her classroom ended up testing positive. So we were pretty aggressive in that approach. We're going to be, we're going to try to be as smart and safe as we can. We also know that every time we go virtual, there's a greater chance of learning loss. So that's a tough thing, too, you know? But we're going to get better and better at this whole thing of, you know, the platforms and, you know, back and forth, and I think there's always going to end up being an element in education now where there's a digital delivery, even in a traditional school classroom setting. And I think we're just going to, students are going to get more used to it, staff's going to get more used to it. I hope that gives a little more depth to your question.
Yes, it does, and I appreciate you addressing the divisional, the digital divide, and within that, that will contribute to possibly more learning loss. So thank you for those answers. Any other questions or thoughts?
I have a question. Looking at this timeline, and I know you guys don't meet to the 13th, but getting the Ready for Learning Plan to the PPC on the 19th, for them to turn around and then give us feedback on the 22nd is a very short window. Is there any way to move that to, like, the 16th, so they at least have the weekend?
We, that's possible, that is doable. We want to make sure that we can get it to them in a timely manner that they can review it. But we also kind of want to wait to, hopefully, we can get those guidelines by DESI, because we do have to make sure that we stay within the guidelines that has been provided. So yes, that is doable, that we can do that.
Can I give you another scenario? Here's another way I look at it, is I think we want to try to get as many things in the books that are solid, that we can approve and do that in July. But I have a feeling that we may need to come back and do a Part 2 in August at our agenda meeting on the 12th and have that be a special meeting. Even though we may not need it for personnel, we may need a special meeting for Ready for Learn.
And then also, keep in mind too, board members, we also not just want to give it to our PPC, but we want our community to give us the feedback. So even though we're going to survey our community, we may have to go back to our community to do some type of community forum where they can give us feedback off the Ready for Learning Plan. So we just don't want to just give it to a one-time shot for our community, but also with our PPC, but we need to be more, we want to be transparent as possible because the safety of our students and staff, again, our team's staying ready, that is our main top priority.
And then in those, you got, the district will have their core pillar, or else their core, you know, what they believe the plan is moving forward for input, correct? Like, it will be something of, something that have meat to it, it will be meaty?
Yes.
And not vague?
Yes, correct. We want to make sure that we have a thorough plan. We currently have a thorough Ready for Learning Plan. We want to make sure that we continue to be as thorough as possible. So that is why, as good as our superintendent just told you, even though we put that timeline, we understand that we want to do this the right way and also take in consideration of getting feedback from our community, not just the public, but also even from our school community.
Okay, we appreciate you.
I have some questions if that's okay.
Director Wood?
As we, as we consider, you know, potential changes to the virtual academy, as we try to be flexible in, you know, kind of response to what's happening this summer, I would like to hear why we wouldn't just go back to the quarterly commitment system that we had this, this past school year, where we asked, you know, students to commit to virtual learning a quarter at a time as opposed to a semester at a time. That doesn't have to be tonight, but maybe, you know, some consideration of discussion of that whenever the plan is brought to us. As you prepare a new COVID leave policy for our discussion, I would like to know the financial impact of this spring semester's COVID leave policy. And the reason I ask that is just because I would tend to lean towards having the same policy in the fall, but if it, for some reason, was financially unable to bear, then I would, I would, you know, hear your explanation of that, but I would lean towards the same policy that we had.
Director Wood, that's a very good question and very good point, a point that we have already begun to explore, what we spent from this past year on the COVID leave compared to the things that we have. So we are doing, as a district, we're breaking down the expenditures from the ESSR, including the COVID leave, as well as the staffing that we're going to be reporting out, where we are with staffing, just coming out of COVID. So we want to make sure that we are being good stewards over our resources, our financial resources.
Whatever policy y'all bring to us, I would, I would love to just hear an explanation for any differences from what we had this spring, because it was a very well-received policy, I believe, and so seems like we've got a pretty good starting point. And the last point that I thought of as I heard your presentation is consideration of not having, you know, field trips for students. How do you explain that but allowing athletic teams to travel to, you know, out-of-town sports events? Because it seems to me very comparable to, you know, have students traveling together on a bus for extracurricular activities, whether it be fun learning environment or an athletic environment. So prepare, you know, an explanation with regard to that. You don't have to explain it tonight, but it's, that's something that I'd like to hear. You don't have to explain it tonight, but it's, that's something that I'd like to hear.
These are just great points, but I want you to know these are great discussions that we are just having, looking at the pros and cons. So, so thank you for those.
Director Adams?
Thank you. Director McGee, could you tell us some about what all the statuses for staff being vaccinated at this point? Is that a part of the safety of everything?
We did, as the Point of Contact Committee met a couple of days ago, and that was one of the things we did talk about. Currently, I don't have the actual percentage, but I will tell you it's roughly over, or nearly 70% of our staff have been vaccinated. Our nurse is also in collaboration with the Department of Health. And the reason why I mention that, because we want to make sure that the number of people that are getting the COVID cases, it has been reported, they are those who are unvaccinated. So we're being mindful. Some of the other discussions that I did not mention that we want to look at is providing vaccination clinics up until, we want to continue those clinics going for both our staff, our students, and even our parents. But we're also looking at and exploring incentives that we can give to our staff for those who have not gotten vaccinated. Again, this is going to be based on our funding. We got to review our funding and make sure that we have the support from the ESTRA fund. So those are all the things that we did discuss because we did look at our current staff on, in terms of vaccinated staff versus those who are unvaccinated.
Can I make a quick add-on to that, Mr. Adams? Because I think it's good for the public to hear. We believe, factually, we know that 67% of our staff, we know for a fact that they've gotten a vaccine. But we would anticipate that that number would go up into the 70%, with some people that got vaccinated that we didn't even know about, that could have done it over the summer, could have done it on their own time, you know, chose when to do it. So we're, we feel pretty good about that as an institution, that the 70%. Of course, we want to get everyone vaccinated, but I just wanted to give that little data piece.
And I certainly want to express appreciation of those 70-plus percent of people who already got vaccinated for their sake and for the sake of their coworkers and students. Along with incentives, are there other things that are possible that can give us even higher percentage for the vaccine?
We're open, we are open to exploring any options that will help us get nearly a higher percentage of vaccinated staff and students.
So what, legally, what are all our options?
We have not explored it yet. I would tell you that we are exploring it now. And we did break down its subgroups from our Point of Contact Committees to research, and that was one of the subcommittee that will research the incentives and bring us something back next week. I think they're scheduled to meet again on the 16th, is that correct? So the 16th, so they're scheduled to meet, I think that's at 9 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken, or 11, 1 o'clock. So they will have an update then at that time.
Great. I think I would be interested, my guess is our fellow coordinators would also be interested. Just, we're doing our job to consider every possible reasonable legal option. And then think through the pros and cons of those options.
Very good point, and I would tell you, we are exploring every option we can legally to do what we can to provide that support to both, again, our staff and our students and our parent, even our parents.
Hey, Mr. Adams, could you turn on your mic, too? I don't know if it's on. Thank you.
Not on?
That's what I'm being told. Thank you.
How about that? I feel like I'm at home, I'm talking and nobody's listening. Okay, so you anticipate that there might be more information about that when we meet in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
And hopefully, we will have something more concrete.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
I just have an add-on to Director Adams. In just a fourth, thinking about some of the comments and things that I've heard. I think, too, it's important to point out that, you know, we cannot mandate vaccinations. We cannot ask people to show whether or not they have been vaccinated. And so, and so obviously, like separation of persons regardless of age and whether or not they have been vaccinated or not, we can't do that because then we get into legal issues, right? And, and from what I'm reading in just different business journals, you know, employers are looking at how they could be entering into waters that they may not necessarily want to be in. So I just want to make sure that we are not adding a, adding a level of pressure to some of the people that folks may feel may not be vaccinated to where it gets into it having an adverse impact on our student population as well as our staff as a whole. And so, and so right when the district is looking at ways to incentivize people to get vaccinated or whatnot, just being mindful that like we are not entering into a phase of pressuring or also known as bullying people to get into it because of them feeling left out or isolated without those words being said.
Madam President, that is an excellent point. And I would tell you that we had a pretty good discussion on making sure we do not violate any one HIPAA rights. We're not, we're not going to, we want to do the things the correct way. But we also want, the main thing we want to keep in mind from the Point of Contact Committee and the Ready for Learning is to keep in our state the safety of our students and staff and staying within compliance to law and their privacy rights. So, so thank you for that point.
No problem. Director Nolan, I think I, yes, okay, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So quickly, very quickly on the law, because we got a lot of public comments about it. It was raised by board members. I have this week taken a really deep dive into these laws, and I can very quickly tell you what we can't do, and then we can talk about what we possibly could do. We all know we can't mandate masks or vaccines. We also cannot condition employment or education on being masked or vaccinated. We cannot quote-unquote discriminate based on wearing a mask or vaccination status. So we can't treat people differently based on that status. And under laws, we cannot encourage masks or vaccinations unless we provide a statement that says they are not required. So that's what the law prohibits us from doing. And I will also add, just because it was raised in a public comment and because it was raised, I've seen it on social media, there are quite a few people who are very concerned and would like us to defy these laws because they are so concerned about the public health impacts. I would just say that while I understand the concerns there, if we were to defy these laws, it would take about two hours for someone to get an injunction against our requirements, if we tried to put requirements into place. So if we tried to require these things, we could not enforce those requirements. They would be ineffective. So we have to find ways to, to, you know, encourage and make sure that as many people are masked and vaccinated as we possibly can, given these legal restrictions. And so I'm going to go through, Mr. McGee, I'm going to go through some things that I would really like to see. And I'm sorry, I said Mr., I believe it's Dr. McGee, correct? I want to make sure that these are things that we consider in our plan, and I would really like to see them when you bring it back to us. So I'm going to go kind of quickly, but I can provide you all of this in writing. One thing is I would really like to see us consult with not just the Department of Health or the Department of Education, but other public health and pediatric health experts. So a great resource would be the Little Rock chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. They provided guidance at the beginning of last school year, and I think that it would be great to consult with them about what we should be doing as well. I agree that encouraging and incentivizing masks and vaccinations as much as possible is very important. The state is doing this with fishing licenses and lottery tickets, and they are covering the same law we are. So I think that we should be able, under that law, to do that. So some of their districts are talking about cash incentives. I've heard an idea that for elementary students in schools where there are, or all students in schools where there are uniform requirements, we could give them a free day if they're wearing their mask, things like that, where they can wear what they want. So really exploring all the ways that we could incentivize and encourage masks and vaccinations. I really think it will be important that we are able to enforce parents' wishes about their children wearing masks. Because I, as a parent, if I go to my child's teacher and I say, my child needs to wear her mask all day, I'm going to expect that to be enforced. And so, you know, I don't know if it's going to require a form that the parent signs or something like that, but, you know, where does the parent's choice, and they are really on board and they want this enforced? I think we need to make sure that we can enforce that during the day while the parent is not there. Let me keep going, sorry, I lost. Social distancing, I saw it in your presentation. I know there are a lot of concerns about how feasible it's going to be now that we have so many students back on campus. And I think that it's going to be important to provide real information to parents. You know, I will tell you, at my daughter's school, last year, as more and more students came back, our principal told us, you know, social distancing in the classrooms is really not as feasible as it was earlier when we had so many students virtual. And so she was communicating with us about what is actually happening. And so I think we need to make sure that parents have that information. If the number of students in the class does not make social distancing possible, we need to be very clear about that. And ideally, make changes so that we can social distance, social distance. And, I mean, I've only got a couple more. I've had several parents ask whether they receive information about masking and vaccination at their child's school. This ranges from questions about will they know if their child's teacher is vaccinated, which I know poses some very, I mean, there are legal restrictions on what we can and cannot disclose. But there are a lot of questions about disclosing raw numbers. So Mr. Ford just gave us raw numbers or percentages for the district, percentages of vaccination. And I think that we should make that information available on a school-by-school basis to the best that we can. I know we don't have all the information, but to the best that we can, I think we should provide that when parents ask for it. And, okay, the next one is a big one, ventilation upgrades. That is one of the things that our SR money can cover. It's not something, to my knowledge, that we have undertaken this summer. It is one of the biggest concerns I've heard from parents is making sure that there is sufficient ventilation to help protect their children in school. And I've heard this from teachers. If we cannot move forward with ventilation upgrades in our buildings immediately, because I understand that there are a lot of complications. We need to know, for example, if a millage is going to be passed because we need to be able to plan for building upgrades and renovations, and we need to make ventilation upgrades part of those. So I understand those things. But if we are not able to do the entire HVAC system, then maybe portable air purifiers are a good investment. You know, I just think we need to look at, ideally, test the air quality in the ventilation and then look at ways that we can upgrade that quickly. And then, sorry, I know I'm going quickly, but I'd really like all of these things to be covered when you come back to us. Okay, so you've covered several of the things. I really appreciate the flexibility with the virtual school, that was a big concern for parents. The last one that I will mention is the timeline you've laid out here. I have two concerns. One is, we are going to need to vote on something and get it in place before school starts. And so, you know, that was just mentioned. Either we're going to be voting on it in July, or we're going to have to have some sort of special meeting. And we need to do it quickly. And I would put COVID leave for employees in that category of needing to vote on it before school starts. And then the other thing is, the update to the website in August does not give parents very much time to really make a decision. They'll be waiting and waiting for that information to be able to make a call about sending their children in person or virtually. So as pieces of this are finalized, I would encourage you to go ahead and release that information. And, you know, acknowledge, here's the things we're still working on, but here are the things we know we're going to do. And just, you know, continue to put that information out there as soon as you can. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Nolan. And will you follow that up with an email to the superintendent and Dr. McGee? I want to make sure they capture all that.
I would like to add to her comment before I take my seat. I want you to know, Director Nolan, we actually do have a plan for the air ventilation that is already in the works, that we're looking to spend that money out of ESTRI. So that is the plan that Mr. Yarbury and Mr. Bailey and the superintendent is already kind of developing, and we're trying to get to moving on that plan. So I would like you, the board and the community, to know that we have already begun with the air ventilations of the schools in that plan.
And stand right there one second, please. Director Wilson?
I'm saying, if we're at 67% of vaccines for the district, that's really, really good. The last numbers I got for children's were two weeks ago. We were only at 73%, and UAMS employees and staff and students is only at 84. So 67% is well over like the general public for Pulaski County. So that's actually, I'm very pleased to hear we're that high.
Thank you, appreciate you.
When we, when we do the HVAC upgrades over the next few weeks, months, whatever, could we do a little bit of a PR campaign with that also? Just to kind of show the community, you know, look what we're doing, look how, look at the investment we're making, just so that there's some confidence?
Yeah, I just want to couch a little bit of that investment. What we've looked at is systems, okay? You know, and a lot of times, people look at quick fixes on air ventilation and often think that it can be done with a small machine in the classroom or some sort of special, you know, filter that can be added in. That, that really doesn't create the safety that you seek. So we're looking at, you know, where our 10 worst ventilated buildings are and looking to try to address that with some ESTRA funding. And that, that amount of money, it looks like it'll probably be close to $5 million. Mr. Bailey, did you want to add anything to that?
Good evening, the board.
Good evening.
So you're right on point. So what we're looking at now, so it's taken quite a bit of time to actually get equipment in. So we've had actually engineers go out and look at those, at least 10 buildings out there with how fresh air units currently installed, so we can go replace those. So the big part is going out and trying to get that air turnover in the actual classroom. So many of our buildings have a lot of old, it's called the shunk units on top. So if you see a huge, big air conditioning thing over there, most likely a fresh air unit. So we've identified 10 of those. So some of the buildings that we actually need to replace, the roof needs to be replaced as well. So through ARPS, it's not currently eligible for roof replacement. So kind of have to prioritize those ones that, what we have is kind of prioritized now on top 10. I think we can probably discuss that tomorrow as well through our facility meeting, too. But we are, we do have plans that won't be in place by the time school starts. It's a long lead time on many of these. Sorry. I'm finished now.
It don't take long, just say what you need to say.
You can repeat.
So just repeating, just in case the public or you all didn't hear me. So we have the 10 schools identified right now, the top 10 priorities right now.
I'm sorry? Okay, continue.
So we'll continue to identify those and prioritize those schools as the year goes on. But the big part right now is lead time, we have to come, go in. And when we replace that fresh air unit, there may be some other mechanical systems that have to be replaced in the actual classrooms, along with controls as well. So I think we can actually bring controls into that ARP asset funding, too. We have some buildings that have some fresh air units and need some mechanical upgrades, but they also need a roof as well. So if you get up there and you start replacing actual mechanical systems on a roof that's already past due, you're going to mess up even more. So a lot of stuff is kind of depending on, you know, the bond extension, if we get additional money there, or if we just have any other additional savings for those remaining schools. But we are looking at some portable units as well, we've explored some of those. Really just don't want to waste the money on some of it. Some, we're really looking through the facts and the research on them to see if they're actually worth $1,000 or $1,200 a unit or so before we actually make that, that large investment.
Do you have an estimate of how many roofs are involved? Now, you don't have to get into detail, just?
So we have about 10 roofs right now. Not all of those are actually included in the HVAC upgrades. I left that list that we have it, I have it, we'll discuss a little bit more on tomorrow. But as we go through those things, we can, we make sure we can replace those units out there. So regardless of COVID was here or not, here or not, we need to replace those fresh air units because, I mean, it's proven that daylight and, you know, pro- units, because, I mean, it's proven that daylight and, you know, proper light and fresh air in classrooms actually produce better results. So, many times you get tired in the evening, it's not because you ate a large lunch, it's because the CO2 level in the actual room has increased. I have a CO2 level in my office, so when you come in or at your house, so it shows how much that CO2 level, just from us breathing, you know, coming in. So it does affect your mental capacity many times, so just a little tidbit. Regardless of the pandemic is here or not, we do need to upgrade those fresh air units.
Anything else? Thank you. All right. So with that, we will move forward and go into our agenda for next week. And typically, y'all know how I do, like, go through a series of numbers, and if y'all have any comments or thoughts. So, of course, Roman numeral 1 through 4. Do you guys have any thoughts or concerns with that?
I suppose I have a question that I'm, that I'm not really sure where the topic would fit, so because Roman numeral 4 says district reports, I'll just lump it into that. I believe that we should be receiving ACT Aspire results soon? Is that correct, Mr. Por? And if so, I think it would be imperative that we talk about that.
I'll let Dr. McGee take the first crack at that.
You are correct. Normally, the ACT Aspire results will come in July 1. But because that window was open for extended period of time, the results won't be into August, around August the 1st. So, we're going to have to push our, we're going to ask the board to give us time to be able to disaggregate the data and then create a report and send it out to, to present to the public and to the board on the results. So, right now, we're anticipating not getting the results back until August the 1st.
Good deal. And is there anything else? 5 through 7?
I just want to make up one point to add into there, that under special services, we are going to, besides the report from Ms. Steele, we also, under that category, will be bringing forward a transfer report, that we have to accept transfers that are either seeking to leave or come into our district. And so, we will be providing you that at that meeting as well.
Ms. Hatter, just a question. Can you say a little bit more about, could a little bit more be said about what the nature of, or the special services report, what's going to be covered at that time?
Dr. McGee, come up and join me, but one of the things that, we have not had the chance to have the board really get to hear about our special ed program, and, you know, it impacts such a large population, and it's a population of parents that are highly engaged in their, their child's learning. And we want you all to be aware of where some of our special programs are, what are some of the things that, that, you know, we have in place in terms of even responses to audits that were done by the state, and how we've, we've tried to work with that, what are some of our plans for the future. This particular group is being shifted this year as a part of the organization plan to Dr. McGee as a direct supervisor of sped, because we want them working closer with our instruction group.
And so what we like to do is just continue to provide an overview, but also provide that additional plan of support that we're going to have for our kids, but not for just their specific needs, but also the academic side of it. It is our belief that if we can continue to grow our children academically, including our special students who are receiving special services, we want to just provide that, that those services and support to them, so that they can be successful as they continue to grow as citizens.
Director Wood?
So another question, or a topic that I believe would fit into the finance report would be a pretty significant discussion about the millage.
So, I think that'll be shaped a little bit by tomorrow, you know, of coming back. I think tomorrow will be very informative, and so you may insert some other ideas to us tomorrow of what, what specifically may need to be brought up in that board meeting.
All right. What did I stop at, 7? Okay. And then, of course, 9 through, 10, I guess y'all won't have anything to say about that. And then, 10 is the last one, 9 through 10? Okay.
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
What committee assignments do you refer?
The committee assignments are the ones that were sent out in the superintendent's report. And so it talked about the Wellness Committee, the Wellness, Bright Futures, and so like, it was like a few of those different committees, but they're in the email that, that went out Friday.
Okay. Are these assignments for specific board members or just like employees?
They are board, because we, we don't assign employees except for superintendent Por. They're only on board.
I was making sure, because, you know, you had previously, you know, announced in committee, so I meant, and then, well, I say it again. So, I guess we can just get to that a little bit later. And as we go. Yes.
Okay. I think I heard someone online, Director, I'm just going to call on you two really quick, Director Nolan, did you have something, or was that Director Mourning? Director Nolan, you're recognized?
Just to ask, what is included under the policy updates that are listed there? And then, I have some things that I would like to see included, if those are not, if you'd like to talk about those.
Okay, you are breaking up just a bit. Can you restate that, please?
So I will, first, I would just ask, what is included when it says policy updates? And then I have, I think, a follow-up to that. But first, I would like to hear what that entitles.
Attorney Watson?
So in terms of policy updates, we're looking at, you know, we got updates post legislative session, and we covered a lot of those previously, but for this particular month, we're looking at Sections 1, which is governance, 5, which is curriculum instruction, 6 is community relations, and 7 is business and finance. Looking at the ASBA recommendations. In regard to 1, I was also going to include the non-discrimination clause that was, the non-discrimination policy that we had a first reading on previously as a part of that package.
So prior to being a few days ago, I guess, I don't know, a week ago or so, I sent Mr. Por an email requesting certain items be placed on the agenda, and one of those was the COVID leave policy, which, waiting to see if that was included under policy updates. My concern is that we are going to need to act on this school starts, and that's a short timeframe. And, you know, I have followed our policy, we get something placed on here, COVID leave policy, and then updates on where we'll stand on teacher and employee pay raises, two things that I really like to hear from the board. I mean, I, I know under our current policy, I can only request, and then, you know, the president and the superintendent make the choice of what to place on it. I do want to address those.
Ms. Nolan, I'll jump in real quick and start to try to address your responses. We actually hope that we heard that the COVID leave policy is being discussed and is being worked on within the PPC groups. And if it can come back in July, we will. If not, we know that it'll come back in the 1st of August. So, we know that has to move and that that's going to come forward. We just haven't created a definite date until we get to talk to the PPC and see whether we can create that kind of good feel, come together like we did at the end of the first semester. In terms of the salary increase, we were trying to bring that forward to you. It would have been projected to be an item for the August agenda meeting, to bring that forward. And I tried to put that into the board report, and I apologize if I didn't do a good job of explaining that, of having that come in in August, and then coming back with a more formal approval of that item in, in October. The, the reason that we're saying August instead of July, which may be what you're asking for, and then we can open it up to discussions, is just the fact that we're still trying to work specifically on the classified employee salary enhancement work with the mag, of reaching out and talking to the different groups and making sure that they're well-educated before we, we make that public and see if we need to make any tweaks. So, it's still a little bit of a work in progress with the classified group. The certified group, we're in a pretty good place. That could probably actually happen now, but we'd like to bring both packages forward at the same time, just so all employees feel that level of respect.
So, on the leave, I'm glad that y'all have a solution. If it is not something can be placed on our July, at that point-
Director Nolan, you're breaking up.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Nobody hear me?
We can hear you right now.
Okay, I just, I was going to say, on the COVID leave, really want to pass them before starts, and so if we cannot get it on that July meeting, we need to take this part of a special meeting, so that we can get it passed before the first day of school. And so I-
We couldn't agree with you more, and I hope that, and that's what I was trying to convey as well. I agree with you totally.
Okay. Okay. And then, oh, that's, that's it.
Oh.
I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, well, that, that we covers, that covers the agenda items for July 22nd meeting. Today, thank you all for that speedy go-through. Today, we was at the State Board of Education meeting, and as some of you or many of you know, that we have moved out of Level 5. And so we are now in Level 4. And what that means is that the, so we moved from intense support into direct support, and basically what that means is that they will monitor. I spoke with Ms. Stacy Smith, who is, who is the Deputy Commissioner of Education, and she and, and then it will be a collaborative effort between DESI or ADE and the district to work together as a collaborative effort, making sure that, that those five target areas are maintained, and then that we're growing. And then 2, from a board standpoint, it being a writing, and then we as a board will then know how to position to look at those same reports to make sure if there's any concerns, that, that, that we see them before the states see them, and so we can have a way to correct that. And overall, you guys, I mean, we got a favorable vote, and then Level 4 is, we are in Level 4 for one year. And once that, then we go out of the levels, is what I understand. And so, you guys, this is something that I know we have been working towards, particularly the staff that, you know, have stayed and, and then had to pivot, or had to be flexible this entire time. And so, and the goal kept moving on, on, on what was required, and our staff stayed with it to help us get to this point. And so, just wanted for everybody just to honor our staff, the ones that are unseen. Anytime we request stuff, they have, they have to drop almost what they're doing to get what we want. And so, just a round of applause to all of you guys in the background that really make this thing work. So, yay for you guys. And, thank you, thank you, thank you. And the other thing is, superintendent was there, and he, he spoke a little bit, so since he's here, I will not speak for him or summarize what he said. I will allow him to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Hatter. And it was a really good day, guys. It was really, really good day. Got a lot of positive comments from staff, from parents today. Driving, walking away from a restaurant at lunch today, I had two people stop, beep their cars at me and roll their window down, said, "Yes." So that felt good, you know, just kind of that instant street recognition even. You know, the, the one thing that I think oftentimes people forget is that, you know, there was a lot of really good work being done, even before Mike arrived, of people trying to do the right things in this community. I can share that when I arrived, I think that one of the things we did, so many things, was systems. And sometimes I think that was maybe a little bit frustrating, that people like, why is the things aren't moving as quick? But we had so many big-time systems to put in, e-school, e-finance, the, the system that we use for our HR procurement, we put in new phone systems. We, we had the, then the things that we did with facilities. I mean, we had so many things that were going on there that were really foundational, and but they were meaningful. And I don't want to lose sight in the fact that people like Kelsey Bailey was there right from the whole get-go, people like Marvin Burton, Sadie Mitchell, Pam Smith, Veronica Perkins, just to name a few, that were, and Robert Robinson, that, you know, were here all this whole time trying to, to make an impact. We kind of took a whole different level, I think, to, the last two years, when they started to understand what we wanted to do with criteria. The criteria just met, made sense. It's like foundational, good things all schools should do. We got to have collaboration. We got to be able to do the science of reading well. What happened there, the state and the district really hit stride at that point, and we were running together. And I give credit to the commissioner and his staff, but I also give credit to Hope and Randy and Darian and Jeremy, Sheila Whitlow from the state, who was really handed on with us. They were just doing a great work, you know, and we really picked up a lot of momentum. There was really cool stats that were shared about what our own staff was saying about us, in terms of what they believed we're doing, in terms of implementation of the science of reading, or how we're doing standards in math and literacy. Powerful stuff. And we'll make sure that we get that document shared with you, so that you can see some of the good work that our staff has been doing. I also complimented all of you in the meeting, because one of the first acts that you all took was to confirm the fact that you believed in those exit criteria, that it was the right work for our district. You're going to have to confirm that again, or affirm it with the district improvement plan. And I don't think we're going to sway too much away from this, because again, it's foundational work. We need to add in some career tech information. We need to add in some things that take next steps on literacy. You know, some of the things that you've asked for, Mr. Wood, they brought up today of next steps on literacy, of the depth of looking at your data and so forth. So, you know, as a board, I appreciate what you've done in, in your time to support us and ask questions and develop your own capacity. And I'm excited too about, you know, we've got Shay Loring coming in as a curriculum person, and Keith coming in as our chief academic officer. Final two points. Vicky and I did a little video on this. This community never gave up on us. This community invested in this district over the last five years, because I truly believe this community cares about kids in a deep, deep way. They may not agree with all the politics, they may have voted down extensions of debt, but they believe about kids. This would be groups like faith-based organizations, fraternities, sororities, parents, business leaders, the city, our kids, okay, all trying to make our district better. And then finally, let us not forget that our staff, that 3,400 individuals, man, they have worked hard, and they've had to go through some crazy times, crazy adjustments, politics, weather-
Everything.
-and a pandemic. And they've continued to go fight and help and support kids. And that's why it's so important we come back on these salary increases for our employees, because it's, they're, they're well-deserved. I can't wait to come in with a true action item on, on a salary delivery in October to say, "Let's give these folks, you know, that salary increase," and with the mindset that we're not just doing it for one year, but we got a salary increase for the next year and the next year. That's what I'm so excited about. And we were able to share that a little bit today. So, board members, I- So, board members, I appreciate getting to work with each of you on this, and our work, it isn't far from done, you know, it's far from done. But today was a very, very good day. If you go look in the context of school districts that have been taken over by states in any urban environment all over the place, this is a significant moment. And especially significant because they didn't do it necessarily by D's and S's and all that, they did it by foundational things that we, they're saying, "We are doing the right work, we have momentum," and it's a tribute again to our staff. Thank you, Ms. Hatter.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This brings us to the close of our meeting. Do any of the board members have anything to share with the board that's for the good of the board? Director Mason?
I just had a question about the state meeting. Will the directors get a report regarding the level, the reduced level from five to four?
We should get a, we will get a report. So we should look for that in the coming weeks, at least by next, well, probably not by next week, but within the coming weeks.
I believe that's true, too. And the one thing I want to share is that tomorrow, you know, we know we're going to have the 10 o'clock work session to get us started on, you know, really being collaborative and talking about, you know, structure for extension of our debt. Please also know that at 9:30, there's going to be a press conference out right here or in the front part of our building that we're going to do in conjunction with the mayor. And he wants to honor the district for getting out, and I think that's going to be a good PR moment. We'd love to have you all show up a little bit early tomorrow for that, if you can, at 9:30. Thank you.
Director Wood?
I'm a little careful in what I want to say because I kind of come at this with just a little bit more reserved celebration about today. I'm glad that this district is wholly ours now. But with that comes monumental responsibility. There's no one else to blame, there's no one to point fingers at anymore. And I still carry a lot of heaviness about the level of academic achievement in the school district. I remember five years ago, being appointed to the cab, and the first days, the first meetings, the first months, just the heaviness of the realization that the statistics we talk about all the time are individual human beings and they are, they are lives that are affected. And, and, you know, we are, we are out of Level Five, but it is not so much because our academics are measurably better than they were six years ago, or 10 years ago, or 20 years ago. And I just, you know, I carry a real solemnness that what we have to resolve to do as a board is to do the things that the state failed to do or couldn't do, wouldn't do, things that elected boards before us couldn't do, wouldn't do. Federal government couldn't do, wouldn't do before us. We have to change the trajectory of young people's lives. Mr. Mason, I care a lot about the things you talked about recently as far as the school-to-prison pipeline and ending that and giving young people the hope of a future. And we have, we have a remarkable opportunity, but it's also a remarkable responsibility on our board to do big and bold things that a lot of people before us have tried and a lot of people before us have failed. But I love the heart of everyone in this room and the commitment that all of y'all have to young people. So I look forward to doing big things with y'all over the next several months.
Thank you, Director Wood. You touched on a point that is, that was needed. We talked about, we are, we have members that, we are very heavy data-driven in looking at data that is coming out of the school buildings are going to be extremely important, not only just at a district level, but doing that deep look inside and seeing what is going on and having reports come in quarterly or every nine weeks about building, data coming out. And so everything you said is definitely on the radar because we know that that does contribute to the cradle-to-prison pipeline as well as the literacy deficit, which creates, you know, a math deficit, which creates the digital, I mean, like, it just goes on and on and on. And so being intentional and being truly student-focused and looking at proven results that have and is working is going to be very pivotal, and we will need to be very intentional about keeping it student-focused. I just wanted to echo that and to share just a little bit of my thoughts with that, too. Thank you.
And just to add on to what I said, it's so easy as a board to get lost in the minutia of what we do in these meetings and the business of the districts, the dollars and the cents and the reports and the this and that. And to pass till next month, the this topic, or pass till this, you know, next quarter, we'll talk about this. And it's so easy to have spent a number of years, and you wonder, what have I done? What have we done? How have we moved the mark? And in the last five years, we have, we have done significant things. We've done remarkable things. This is a better school district than it was five years ago. It's better than it was 10 years ago. But when the end-of-the-day measurement is student academic achievement, we, you have to be intentional about keeping your focus on that because it's so easy to get distracted away from that focus.
Thank you so much. Director Wood, I mean, Director Adam, Greg Adam.
Thank you, Ms. Hatter. And thank you, Ms. Hatter and Mr. Por for your comments about being there today, and I appreciate y'all being able to be there. I was not able to be there, but just, and just heard just the basic thing that the state board had approved, you know, the state's recommendation that we go from Level Five to Level Four. I wondered, in the vote, what was the vote today?
Yeah, it was, how many members are on that board? It was everyone. It was a unanimous vote.
That's great to hear.
Yes.
Yeah.
It is.
That's great to hear. I-
Thank you.
It takes me back to when it was not a unanimous vote and Ms. Hatter and I were in the parking lot, so.
That's right. And then you told me to buckle in and be ready to ride.
That was a hard day. That was a hard day, Ms. Hatter.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so, you guys, that brings us to-
Ms. Nolan just tried to raise her hand.
Oh, Ally, excuse me, Director Nolan.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So on the big outcome today, I wanted to thank Vicky for being there for us, for me. It was really, really incredible to watch Vicky. I've seen her at so many state board meetings advocating for LRSD as a parent and a community organizer, and to see her there today as our school board president and have her be there for this vote was, it was just a really special moment. So I just want to thank Vicky for her part in all of this. And I'm going to stop there for a moment, but I do have, I'm going to take a moment and thank Vicky for that.
Thank you. It's a team effort. Thank you. Thank you.
I also want to, and this may be getting off into the weeds, you can say we don't need to talk about it tonight, but there was a front-page Democrat Gazette article very recently about school board elections around the state and how every school board member in most districts will need to run for reelection in 2022 due to the census. And so I just wondered if very quickly we could get an update on how that applies to LRSD. I assume that it does apply to LRSD, but I just would like to hear if, you know-
Yeah, so-
-just get an update on it.
Yeah, so Superintendent have been in communications and have just a little bit of an update about that. Shout out to the state of Ohio for helping push that across, help the rest of the state to get some more information.
Thank you. I was going to put this in a board report, but now you will not get it because I'm going to go ahead and share it verbally with everyone here now. The, the federal government was not going to release census data until the end of September. The state of Ohio sued the federal government to get an earlier release because it was going to impact all their responsibilities to set up future elections. That then moved census data to hopefully being released by the first of September. They're going to be, it's going to be a different data set called a legacy report, but I think it's going to basically represent the right data for us to be able to make decisions. I had a conversation set up with Mr. Shelby Johnson for next week, who is with the state GIS system, who drew the lines that we now use for your board zones. But after all of you reached out to me in one fashion or another off the article, I then got ahold of him on Tuesday and got the update about this lawsuit, about when the census data is coming in, and found out that he is willing to work on our data again this year as it comes in. There is some survey data that was done with the American Community Survey. That's another set of data that somewhat resembles what census data looks like. And so he is going to take a look at that. It won't be a total true picture, but he is starting to look at it to see how that may correlate in terms of changes that have gone on in your board zones. So we should know maybe a little bit more in the first of August. Worst-case scenario would be not until the first of September, when they would get to start to work on it. The good thing is that we have an independent person that has used our data to set up our current zones. And I think that those that were a part of that and watched it saw that he really was very thorough and came in with options and also came in with real data sets so that you could see, you know, the variances between each board zone. The trick, I think, is going to be, what happens if it's only one or two board zones that need to be modified? Can it just then be those two zones or three zones or four zones that get modified and just impact those four board members? Or does it require the entire board? And we're not alone on this because, obviously, there are other districts that are impacted with this new census. And, you know, everybody doesn't, no one wants to have an entire new board, set of board members up for reelection. So I think there's a lot to still be played out over the next month or two. We'll keep you informed, and I hope that helps give you just a little bit of an overview.
If I read that article correctly, it said that there would have to be entirely new elections in any district that had a minority population of greater than 10%. And so that, if the article is right, and I admittedly did not go look up the statute myself, I did not do any research on it, but that struck me as very difficult for us to get around with, you know, zone drawing exceptions and stuff like that, that it felt, at least the way the article made it sound, as though it was rather clear.
And that's something we'll, I have to tell you that I think we have to keep on exploring, and I think it's being challenged.
Oh, okay. Okay.
All right.
By who? Who's challenging that? I'm sorry.
I just think superintendents and other boards, you know, are looking at this and saying this doesn't make sense.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody has a solution.
Sure.
But I think there's people that are questioning.
Okay.
All right. Well, if that closed out our board comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move the adjourn.
I second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, Little Rock.
Good night, Ally.
Good night.
Ann Chandler again.
Yes.